Good evening. We welcome you here to our city council meeting. A special meeting tonight. We call it to order and we note that full forum is present. All council members are here. For our opening ceremony tonight, we have invited the Reverend Mark Sedden, who is the vicar of St. Stevens Episcopal Church on 3200 West. He's going to come forward and we appreciate him coming tonight. Great to have people from our community here with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. Thank you for having me here, city council members, past and new. And so thanks. It's nice to be here. As the mayor said, I'm Reverend Sedden from St. Stevens Episcopal Church, just on 3200 West and 4700 South. Services at 11:00 on Sunday were worth mentioning. And the prayer that I'm going to share with you tonight is from our Book of Common Prayer. And so for Episcopalians, this is actually a very, very important book. It has all of our services, lots and lots of prayers for various things. And in many ways, this book kind of shapes who we are and defines our identity. And many of the prayers in here go way, way back. Some to the various earliest centuries of Christianity, some to the Reformation in the 1500s, when our church was born. And we take the word seriously and they shape who we are. And this book is really reflects what we're about. And so I wanted to use a prayer from that. And this is a prayer for sound government. For sound government. And it will, it's a, it's got several different sections. And I will leave a little bit of silence in each section. And if you're a praying person, that's a good time to pray. If you're not a praying person, it's a good time to clear your mind and open your heart and open yourself to possibilities. So let us pray. Well, Lord, our governor, bless the leaders of our land that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth. To the president and members of the cabinet, to governors of states, mayors of cities, and to all in administrative authority, grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their To senators and representatives, and to those who make our laws in states, cities, and towns, give courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people and to fulfill our obligations in the community of nations. To the judges and officers of our courts, give understanding and integrity that human rights may be safeguarded and justice served. And finally, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, that we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name. Amen.
We recognize we have a lot of people here for tonight. It will come up shortly on our agenda. But as is the custom, we recognize both current and former elected officials. Representative Larry Wiley, Representative Tim Cosgrove, Representative Craig Hall are here in the audience with us. We also have former council members, Don Christensen, Margaret Thomas, and Claude Jones. And of course, Janice Fisher, who's both a representative and a former council member. So we'll get to her, Kim, just a couple of moments. Before, I believe that covered...
How are you doing?
Oh, yes, some more have come in. Senator Karen May, thank you for coming. And I note as well, Margaret Peterson, former council member. And so did I. I'm looking to see if I got everyone, and I think so. And we welcome the Senate President, President Niederhauser.
Thank you.
We're just recognizing all the visiting officials who've come here. We appreciate you being here for this. And so very much appreciate all of you coming. We will take care of one small item of business in our agenda, which is the minutes to the council for action or discussion.
Mayor, move for approval of the minutes of March 25.
Councilman Vincent, the motion is before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second as well, Councilman Vincent. And so it's properly before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for taking care of that. Next, we come to a very enjoyable part of our agenda, and that is to recognize some, an individual that we very much appreciate for service, not only in our city council, but in our state legislature, Janice Fisher. And it's my opportunity to read to you a proclamation by West Valley City honoring Janice Fisher for her decades of service to West Valley City. Whereas Janice Fisher has served West Valley City for decades, many call her the mother of West Valley City. And whereas Janice was heavily involved in the incorporation of the city and was integral to the early success of the city. She dedicated countless hours to ensuring that the city was established and poised to be successful. And whereas Janice served four terms on the city council, from January 1986 to January 2002, and one term on the planning commission. During her time on the council, she served as mayor pro temp. And whereas Janice was instrumental in bringing the Maverick Center, the 2002 Winter Olympics, the Hale Center Theater, and the Family Fitness Center to West Valley. And whereas Janice has served on the Board of Pioneer Valley Hospital and on the Mosquito Abatement District. And whereas Janice also served on the Salt Lake County Boundary Commission and is a longtime supporter and volunteer to the Days of Forty-Seven Committee. And whereas Janice recently retired from her service as a state legislative representative on behalf of District 30, where she served from 2005 through 2014. And whereas all who know Janice know that she is dedicated to her family and her city. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of West Valley City, Utah, that Janice Fisher be recognized and honored for her many years of public service to the citizens of West Valley City. We express sincere gratitude to her for her commitment to making West Valley City a great place to live and work. Thank you, Janice. We appreciate it. In addition, in addition, we have a couple of items of recognition that we think will make an impression. Of course, whoops, gotta get that side here. A copy of this resolution for you. And if you need help with this one, we have here a special gift. There are two parts to this. There are two books here. And one is a leather book of laws passed during the 1919 legislature. And the bottom one, the smaller one you see there, is the 1896 first edition of Drum's Manual of Utah, a souvenir from the first state legislature.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and thank the staff and everyone in this room that I know. Thank you to my friends, my colleagues, and my family. When I say family, you know that does change. But this is, I'm overwhelmed with this presentation tonight, and I want to thank you all so much. I have to tell you that the service I've given in the political arena over the years, this city council was the most enjoyable. It was a wonderful opportunity. But I also love my colleagues from the, just like, come on.
That's not what you said in the Capitol.
You're a wonderful group. And the, and the staff is all my family to me. I want to thank you. I once again want to thank my, my family. They were always there to support me. I said to my son, a couple of days after the legislature, I says, I was hugging him, and I says, "Well, you'll be happy to know you not have to pound any Janice Fisher signs this year." In fact, you may never pound a Janice Fisher sign again. You may want to help other people. But it's been, it's been a wonderful adventure, serving on the council, planning commission. I always loved land use. That was kind of what I really enjoyed. And serving with the legislature, it's been a wonderful ride. And I enjoyed, I did enjoy every minute of it. And so thank you again. I'm greatly appreciative to all of you and to all of you, to all of you, my dear friends. And thank you again. I appreciate that.
Great service and great appreciation, I know, from those of us who are beneficiaries of the work that you did before us. Thank you very much. To the council then, any, Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, you know, I've sat in this chair for 12 years, but I still think that it's Janice's seat. Because Janice sat here for 16 years. And I appreciate Janice and I'm grateful for her service. He's a great civic leader and a great friend, and I appreciate that.
Councilman Rushdie?
I just want to say a couple of quick things to my, my dear friend Janice. And the first thing is, is that I'm sure that the first thing Janice is going to do when she gets out of here is give her husband Barry a big hug. Because I know he's been so instrumental on just allowing her to dive right in and be so involved in our community and that. And I know every time I call the Fisher residence, it's usually Barry that answers. And he, he does a fantastic job of taking care of Janice and their family and really, I know it's a team effort. And so, you know, it's nice to give Barry a little bit of a shout-out because I know how important he has been. But I want to tell just a quick story of when I was, maybe you can illustrate best of Janice's impact upon this city. When I was first elected to the city council six years ago, the city manager and some of his key staff called me in for a meeting. And, you know, I didn't know very many, very many of them, and I didn't know them well at all. And we sat down at the table, and the first thing I told him on this get-to-know-you meeting was, I said, "You know, everything I learned about being a city council member, I learned from Janice Fisher." And at first, their eyes got really big, and then they smiled. And I, when I reflect back on that, it took me a while, but I understand the reason that their eyes got big was because they knew Janice was a fighter, and she stood up for things. And when a resident had a problem and something was wrong, Janice Fisher was the one to get things done and do it. And then the reason why that went to a smile was because I think they realized that anybody that would mentor me, you know, they probably got somebody that's not a complete, total idiot. And Janice took the time to show me a few things that, you know, maybe there would be hope for the city council going forward. But Janice, again, just wanted from, from, you know, speaking for myself, and I know the rest of the city council, is that, you know, I love you and the rest of this council loves you for the great love that you have for our city. And that's something that we're trying to incorporate more, is that we really recognize the, we try to be smart in our planning and our thinking, but we also realize just how much heart has to do with building a city. And grateful for the, for the great heart and the great love that you have for West Valley City and its people. Thank you.
Thank you. With that then, again, thank you for the great service. We appreciate all of you who came to support Janice and recognize her. It is an indication of the many great people that she has touched the lives of. So again, thank you very much. Now, we have instituted, or reinstituted, I believe, a tradition. You're all welcome to stay. We just have another recognition that we're going to do. And then, but this one is for business in our city. We have reinstituted a recognition of businesses that have had and are meaningful to West Valley City. And so we have a proclamation honoring AA Callister Corporation with the inaugural Business Legacy Award. And I would like to read that. Whereas the Business Legacy Award is an award recognizing local businesses that have made significant achievements and a longstanding commitment to doing business in West Valley City. And whereas the award is symbolized by the bald eagle. The eagle's ability to fly and hunt are not entirely innate, but are honed by observing its parents. This process is called imprinting, bonding with parents from birth and following their examples until the eagle can fly and hunt on its own. And whereas the city desires to recognize businesses whose imprint upon the community and the next generation uphold the city's legacy of unity, pride, and progress. And whereas AA Callister Corp. was founded in 1952 by Arthur A. N. Callister Sr. and Arthur A. N. Callister Jr., and opened its doors selling wool from a little store located on the property of the family farm on Redwood Road. And whereas the business grew to include selling livestock, and with hard work and great people skills, the store continued to grow, adding horse tack, clothing, boots, and hats to its inventory. AA Callister's western wear and tack was born, and as Arthur's children grew, they were brought into the business. And whereas over 60 years later, and with many satisfied customers, the children of Arthur A. N. Callister Jr., Mary Ann Callister Day, and Edward Ned F. Callister are active owners of the tack shop still located on the original site with a much larger store, employing people and proud to represent the traditions and lifestyles that made the West famous. And now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, Utah, do hereby proclaim that AA Callister Corp. is a legacy business and hereby award AA Callister Corp. the inaugural Business Legacy Award. First of all, a copy of the proclamation that we just read. We appreciate that. And second, for you to display as you deem appropriate, this statue symbolizing that which we proclaim. Congratulations.
I'm Mary Ann Callister Day. And my brother Ned, we, oh, I'm Ned, he's really Edward. And then an introduction is Bonnie Blaine. She is our main manager and has been for how many years now?
17.
She's been here with us 17 years. So part of our legacy is, of course, our people. And then Marilyn Allred, she has been with our company 28 years. So that's pretty amazing. And then Shelley, she is our marketing. And how long has it been now?
Six years.
Six years. So big thanks to all of them. And we have about, what, 27 other employees that are holding down the fort. So thank you, all of you. This, when Christine actually called and talked about it, I was really overwhelmed and taken back. We really do appreciate the city and all they do for us. I know there've been several times when we've placed calls and the fire department is there in a snap and, and just great support from all the city and the police and when we needed help. So thank you very much.
Okay, I'll put it this way. Does that, would that work? Grandpa Callister, several years ago, my grandpa, when they, they bought the farm, there was just a little joke amongst his friends. It's just one little thing I'd like to share. And that's when Redwood Road was nothing but a dirt road. And his, his friends were joking and said, "Art, you're crazy to build way outside of Salt Lake City like you're doing." He says, "Salt Lake will never grow out that far." And so we smiled about that. And Mary Ann and I, of course, we grew up in Granger, and then it's changed to West Valley City. And we have roots here for quite a while, and some of our family members still live here. So, but we really appreciate this. This is really nice. And of course, the real thanks would be to, to these wonderful individuals that help our company. They're, they're the ones that really make it happen. And these are three wonderful people, and there are many more who have made that happen. And of course, we, we've been there 62 years. And there's many other people who've, who've helped us make it there. And we've really been blessed. But just our, our wonderful partners have helped us and allowed us to spend extra time at the store, and we appreciate them. And we're grateful to them as well. So thank you.
Mayor, would you indulge me for one moment with a personal privilege that you understand?
Without objection from the council, absolutely.
When I, my heart was beating so fast, and I hadn't planned on singing any words. But if you don't mind, if I could have my family's name. This is just part of them, but this is, this is the support group. And thank you, Corey. This is the man right here. This, this carried a lot and helped so much for a lot, especially thank them. And thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, we welcome you all to stay. We finished the recognition part of our council meeting. We're going to work on some kind of routine things, zoning changes, resolutions, appointments and the like. But if you'd like to go out in the hall and visit, then why, that's fine too. No, that's fine. Thank you very much for coming. Next, we go on our agenda to our comment period. And we did have one individual sign up to speak. Laura Owens. And I hope I got that correct. Okay.
Just a moment, but I don't want to come across as looking in or anything. I just want to express a concern. We own a workplace on 4644 Carnegie Street. And we're working hard trying to clean up that area. It's actually a really nice, like, I think what they did was they, they built the apartments after the homes. And the homes are pretty nice out there. But there's a couple of, the workplaces that there has been graffiti across the walls for like eight months. And I mean, I called, I've written letters, and after I did that, I got a letter in the mail saying, "You need to clean up your graffiti." And so I called off, so I came back and said, "You know, something, I'm almost done calling." Anyway, nothing changes. It just stays there. And I've taken pictures of it. There's just garbage all over piled up, graffiti all over. I don't want to be brutal. I mean, I just feel like it's, it's not fair to the homeowners. It's not fair to the rest of us, people that live there. What do I do?
I think you've taken many of the right steps. We'll turn to our acting city manager for a response.
That, we appreciate the information. We can take your address. And actually, if you have time after the discussion here, I can ask our community preservation department head to chat with you out in the hall and can help you with that.
Thank you. I'll just wait outside.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was the only one signed up. So now we move on to item number eight on our agenda, ordinances 14-21. This is the ordinance that amends our fire code, our municipal fire code, to incorporate a change that took place with carbon monoxide detectors. Those are now required in all residential care facilities, including home care facilities. So is there anything else? Then to the council for comment or action.
Motion to approve resolution fourteen dash forty-nine.
We have a motion before us from Councilman Hune to approve resolution fourteen dash forty-nine. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Then to the council for discussion or comment. Seeing none, we'll place this motion or this resolution for approval. Those in favor of approving resolution fourteen dash forty-nine for this agreement on reciprocal parking with SPS Assets Corporation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to resolution fourteen dash fifty to approve an inter-local cooperation agreement with Salt Lake County, Sandy City, South Jordan, West Jordan City, and Taylorsville City relating to the Home Investment Partnership Program. This will be for fiscal years 2015 through 2017. And this is the agreement whereby, by virtue of joining in this agreement, we're able to get access to federal funds, which otherwise would not be available to us, but is a federally authorized process to be able to meet the needs of cities. So, to the, Ms. Cottle, any comments? To the council then for additional comment or action. Councilman Rushton.
Mayor, I would move approval of resolution fourteen fifty.
We have a motion before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. With the motion before us, any further discussion or comment on this that we have discussed previously? Then we'll place resolution fourteen dash fifty for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution fourteen dash forty-nine for this agreement on reciprocal parking with SPS Assets Corporation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to resolution fourteen dash fifty to approve an inter-local cooperation agreement with Salt Lake County, Sandy City, South Jordan, West Jordan City, and Taylorsville City relating to the Home Investment Partnership Program. This will be for fiscal years 2015 through 2017. And this is the agreement whereby, by virtue of joining in this agreement, we're able to get access to federal funds, which otherwise would not be available to us, but is a federally authorized process to be able to meet the needs of cities. So, to the, Ms. Cottle, any comments? To the council then for additional comment or action. Councilman Rushton.
Mayor, I would move approval of resolution fourteen fifty.
We have a motion before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. With the motion before us, any further discussion or comment on this that we have discussed previously? Then we'll place resolution fourteen dash fifty for a vote. All in favor of approving an inter-local cooperation agreement with these various, with the county and cities indicated for the Home Investment Partnership Program, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Resolution fourteen dash fifty-one, which will award a contract to Kilgore Companies for the sixty-four hundred West roadway extension project between Parkway Boulevard to SR two oh one Front End Road. And it's to Jordan Valley Con, oh, excuse me, no, this is Kilgore Company. So, any further information we need since our discussion that we discussed last week, Ms. Cottle?
No, mayor.
Okay. Then to the council for any comment or action.
I would move for approval of resolution fourteen dash fifty-one.
Okay. Councilperson Lang approves adoption of resolution fourteen dash fifty-one. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? These are fairly straightforward. Fortunately, don't have a lot of controversy, so they're pretty easy. All in favor of approving resolution fourteen dash fifty-one, a contract to Kilgore Company for sixty-four hundred West roadway extension project, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have resolution fourteen dash fifty-two to award a contract to Jordan Valley Construction for a storm drain replacement project on Forty-oth West between Thirty-Fifth Sound and Forty-one Hundred Sound. As you recall, that was that, oh, fantastic colored mat. It just was hard to follow, but very colorful. And so we discussed this and was explained to us last week. Any further information we need on this, Ms. Cottle? If not, then to the council then for comment or action. Councilman Lordfelt.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution fourteen fifty-two.
We have a motion before us to approve the mo, the resolu, the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place resolution fourteen dash fifty-two to award a contract to Jordan Valley Construction for a storm drain replacement project, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Then we have resolution fourteen dash fifty-three to authorize the city to purchase a software program, intelligence software from Omega Group for use by the police department. Any further information on this that needs to be brought up here, Ms. Cottle? Then to the council for comment or action.
Mayor, noting that the funds for this software will be paid for by the criminals through asset forfeiture, I move for approval of resolution fourteen dash fifty-three.
Thank you. That motion is properly before us and we appreciate that clarification for those who may be listening in. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place the motion for awarding a contract, or excuse me, for the city to purchase intelligence software from Omega Group, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. That completes item number nine on our agenda. We now go to the consent agenda. And we have resolution fourteen dash fifty-four to ratify the city manager's appointment of Kent Buckner to the West Valley City Historical Society to complete the, an unexpired term from April eighth to December thirty-first of this year. And so, we're going to deal with the others as a group, if that's okay. But since this one's different, to the council for action.
Mayor, on the consent agenda and item A on the consent agenda, the fourteen fifty-four, the, to ratify Kent Buckner on the Historical Society, I just mentioned that, that Kent spent a long time, lived in the city his entire life, has written a small history of, of Hunter area and gives that out to all the scouts that are working on their merit badges. And so he's a great addition to the Historical Society. So I'll move for approval of resolution fourteen fifty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second before us. Any further discussion to the motion?
I was just gonna add that this is a, this is a big victory for Councilman Vincent and myself, because we've spoken for years about how do we get Kent Buckner on our Historical Society. And so it's finally come to pass and, and he will be, you know, a great member as that group is currently doing good things in our city, so.
Thank you. We appreciate that and we hope that the work that the two of you do on other projects don't take quite so long. But we're glad that you were able to get this one to completion. So, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We have five other resolutions. Now, I believe that we can do these as a group since they're on the consent calendar. They are all very similar. We have discussed them before. Each of them are a resolution to grant an easement to Questor Gas across city property to a Utopia Hut that needs the natural gas in order to function properly. Because they have to heat those huts to keep them warm so that the electronics don't break down. And those are at locations, resolution fourteen fifty-five is a retention pond at the corner of Holder Drive and Forty-one Hundred South. We have one that is on property at the city by Courtney Metals or Metals Land's subdivision up in the corner of that. We have, the third one is in Country Metals Park at the back of that park. I guess if you're coming in from one side, if you're coming in from the circle, then it's at the front of the park. The fourth one is by the fire station on Forty-one Hundred South. And the last one is, well, I'll say by the Harmon Home on property owned by the city. Those are for our approval to the council for comment or action. Councilman Rushton.
Mayor, I'll move approval of consent agenda items fourteen dash fifty-five through fourteen dash fifty-nine, grant easements to Questor Gas.
Okay. We have the motion before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion to the motion. Then we will place the motion to approve resolutions fourteen fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and fifty-nine for easement for Questor Gas. For a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. That completes item ten on our agenda. My understanding is we have no need for an executive session tonight.
Correct, ma'am.
So, that completes our work unless there's any further comments from the council. If not, we'll entertain our last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
Okay. I will call to order this special meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency here on Tuesday, April eighth. And note that all members of the RDA board are present for this meeting. We do have a number of resolutions that are similar in nature as their real estate purchases hearing about the Fairborn Station area. And acting CEO, Ms. Cottle, do you want to introduce any of those items for us, or?
I can quickly just discuss those. These, these all relate to a singular ownership of property. The sellers asked us to do this in separate agreements for their, for their assistance, which we've agreed to do. These relate to, as you mentioned, the completion of city, the city center Fairborn Station project and basically tie up the remainder of the property that we have to acquire there.
Board members, do you have any questions or any clarifications? If not, we'll probably go through each of these resolutions fairly quickly. So, open to the board, Mr. Bigelow.
Well, I will just comment that there are three distinct, separate parcels. And then one of the parcels is actually, although they're contiguous, they are separate pieces of that parcel and form a part of our overall plan for redevelopment here at city center.
Yes, sir.
With that, I would move approval of resolution fourteen dash oh three.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution fourteen oh three of the real estate purchase at thirty-five, twenty-four South Holmberg Street. Any discussion to that motion? Now, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That, that resolution passes unanimously. Board members, now we're to fourteen oh four.
Chairman, a move for approval of fourteen oh four.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve resolution fourteen oh four, purchased property at twenty-nine eighty-three West, thirty-five hundred South. Any discussion to that one? Not then. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one also passes unanimously. So now, members, we're to fourteen oh five.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of fourteen oh five.
Have a live motion to approve resolution fourteen oh five, the property at twenty-two ninety-one West Leon Avenue. Any further discussion to that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that also appears to pass unanimously. Fourteen oh six is now before you.
I move for approval of resolution fourteen oh six. Second.
Okay. We, motion before this body now is to approve resolution fourteen oh six. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thirty-five, thirty-two South Holmberg is now approved. And the last one, fourteen oh seven.
I would move for approval of fourteen dash zero seven.
Second.
Any discussion to this final resolution? Not? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That also appears to pass unanimously. Now we're each item four. We need a motion to adjourn. So moved. Okay. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. This body will stand adjourned.